Okay, y'all ready to get started?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll call this meeting to order and let the record show all board members except for Ms. Agner, and I suppose she's on her way. Our president, along with our board attorney, our superintendent. Would you please stand for prayer with Ms. Dunell and the pledge?
Most gracious in having a father. Lord, we just thank you for your grace, and Father God, we thank you for your mercy, and we thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening, Lord Jesus. Father God, we pray tonight that as we come before you to do the business of the board, Lord Jesus, Father God, that you would give us a spirit of wisdom, Lord, that we would know what to do, when to do, and how to do it. Lord, we pray that it would be less of us and more of you, Lord Jesus, Father God, and that it would be your will that needs to be done, Lord Jesus. Lord, give us the wisdom and the courage, Lord Jesus, Father God, to make sure, Lord Jesus, Father God, that what we're doing, Lord Jesus, Father God, is in the best interest of our students first and foremost, Lord. And I just pray that you allow us to go home safely from here, Lord. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the item, agenda, is the adoption of the agenda. Before we entertain a motion, we do have an added item. 4.01, number seven. This is a purchase order from Ms. Rudd, Director of Instruction, requesting the approval of a quote from Morzano Professional Learning for two days of onsite professional learning from the Evaluation Center. The funding comes out of Title II and of SAI. So that's to be added. Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Okay, Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. The approval of our minutes of June the 15th, regular school board meeting, public hearing, and executive session.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Dunell makes the motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. And now it brings us down to items of interest by the public. If anyone's here this scene who'd like to address the board at this time, gives you the opportunity to do that. Do we have anyone who'd like to address the board?
I do, I have one thing that I want to add.
Aye, ma'am.
I have something I need to talk. I need to... I want to try to put this on your calendars, please. You know, we contracted with Neola, which is our policies. We are updating all of our policies and bylaws. Part of that was to have our, a board, school board trained with the bylaws. That will be August the 15th. That's the date they proposed, August the 15th, which is a Tuesday, which is a day that we already have a school board meeting from 1:00 to 4:00. And then our regularly scheduled board meeting would be at 5:00 o'clock. But I need to know if, you know...
What will we need to do from 1:00 to 4:00?
You will be trained on the bylaws.
It's like a workshop where they kind of go through, like, creating the bylaws, and I think explaining how this whole, like, process of, like, us going through all of the policies would be, would go.
Are we planning on going through all the policies that day?
You won't go through all the policies. Me and the district staff will go through all the policies, but as the board, you need to know what the bylaws are and the process so that when, as we adopt the new policies that they, you know, that they've given us as we're moving to that system, you will have a better understanding, you will, you know what your roles are. I've never done it, so I can't tell you everything that it does, but it's just acquaint you with the, with the bylaws.
Okay, so if I understand what you're saying is our policy procedure that we've had in the past has changed into a new system?
Lots of our policies need to be updated.
I know that, but I'm just saying, but the way we've done it in the past, this is, this is going to be a new way to do it?
No, we're going through all of our policies right now. And this company is helping us go through all of them and make sure we're, like, up to date with state statutes and statutes and, like, all, like, just kind of going through all of ours. So they'll come to you guys still, like, after they've all been updated. Like, it'll come, they'll come in sections, if I understand that right.
Yes. But it is a new company.
It is a new company, but it's gonna just be helping us make sure ours are correct.
And who else, who else has used this, this group?
There's 14 districts right now.
You've already approved? I don't know, I think...
14, no, more than 14, I'm sorry.
Most districts are using, I know Madison are using Neola.
Madison, Jefferson, I mean, I don't know if I, we can Google it and see.
I thought we had done through this in the past with them, had we not?
We, we approved to use them, but we haven't actually started.
Started the process.
It's just like the first step of it.
Okay.
The first step is them wanting, they want to meet with the board, and like, you, like, do create bylaws, the board bylaws, and then I think they'll explain the process of how all the rest of this works. Sorry, I kind of...
But it sounds like the me with the creating bylaws, that the board will, that it will change the way we've done it in the past.
I don't think it's gonna change the way we've adopted policies. I don't, I don't think that's the purpose of it.
Okay, okay.
Well, when we're saying bylaws, I'm like, Bonnie, it do seems like we are changing something in regards to what we're doing, because typically bylaws pretty much let you know what you can and can't do and how the process gonna be.
Yeah, there are...
So technically, are we doing somewhat bylaws? It seem like we are looking at doing something different or, I guess, creating something. But my only question is, you said that the district, what we're do, review the policies and that there would be no board input?
No, no ma'am.
Now, why is that?
As we update the policies, they will all come for you, for your, for your review and for you to look, for you to...
But that's what I'm saying, as the board, we won't, we won't, like, if the... I understand there's statutory changes. And we have to go with statutory. But if there's anything in the policies that the district wants to change, you mean that there would be district input, but no board input?
I mean, we would be the ones to look at the current laws versus how it was previously written. We will get in line with that law, and then we will present that to y'all.
So why wouldn't the board be a part of that process?
You'll still be a part of it. You want to come up here, I'll tell you every time we're meeting. Absolutely, but I mean...
No, my thing is...
Like, it's a book like this, Deidre, so...
We know, we've, we've gotten...
I, I get that, but I'm just saying, when it comes to the policy, I know that's more of a book function. So I understand, like, even now with job descriptions. I know you guys reviewed job descriptions, y'all make them up to date, and y'all bringing them to us. But most of the time, when they're coming to us, we do have input. And I'm just asking, is that gonna be done in a more time than matter? If you're gonna go through the policy and it's over 500 some pages, I don't want it to be, like, you guys go through that and then you present it to us all at one time.
No ma'am, it'll be a little bit at a time.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm just asking that we're gonna have some real input in this, because...
Do you think it still has to go, like, through the 30-day, like...
I get that, but I'm just saying, if you're changing policy, I do feel like the board should have some input on it. I'm not saying we're gonna write it by ourselves, but I, I'm just trying to make sure. Like, when Bonnie asked this question, you said y'all was gonna review it and bring it to us. So I'm just saying, is it gonna allow opportunity for us to give feedback that's gonna be probably taken in consideration or making some adjustments if we are looking at redoing policy?
And well, how would be the best way to do that?
Go through the public hearing.
The bylaws are pretty much your ground rules of the organization. And as far as your policies, what I, I don't know, but I would assume that this third-party company is gonna bring you a set of proposed policies for everyone to have input on and, and understand what the policies entail. But your bylaws are just gonna be pretty much the, the scope of what your authority is and, and overview.
But for them to be a part of the policy, if they want to have input on the policy changes or the policy additions, because there are several that we have to add, what would be the best way for them to have that input?
Well, I mean, the, the recommendations are gonna come to you from this company, and then the board presumably will get them in advance and either ask for a workshop or discuss it in a meeting, as the board prefers.
You're, you're looking at just, looking at the proposed bylaws, not, not policy.
Right, that's all we're, that's really all I wanted to just tell you tonight, was August 15th, 1:00 to 4:00.
You said, you said the 15th, that's the board meeting night.
Yes, sir.
Does it have to be on that 15th?
No, if you would like to propose another...
And how long are we thinking we would need?
It will be from 1:00 to 4:00.
I'm sorry?
From, it's three hours from 1:00 to 4:00.
Okay, three hours, okay.
You said that was the date of a school board meeting, so are we gonna look at still having a school board meeting that day, or, okay?
If I could ask, the 15th's not a good day for me, but the, um, the 7th, if we end up with the, because of the trim schedule with the meeting on the 7th, would we be able to do it then?
We'd have to check with that with them.
Okay.
I don't know.
Can we ask for that?
August the what?
If it's agreeable with the board. August the 7th, that would be the, the day, the date that we plan to meet to finalize our trim schedule.
No, that's the wrong day.
I mean, that was September.
No.
I am looking at September the 7th on here, and I'm saying August, so September the 7th.
But they were wanting to bring it in August.
Is there, is there a deadline on it? Is there some...
Can they give us more than one date so we can see how that work? Can they give more than one date so we can see how that would work out best for the board?
Sure, I think that, yeah, if you want to, what would be best? What's the pleasure of the board? You tell me. I can't just tell them, is there a specific week or date?
Whatever day y'all pick, if it's, I'm probably gonna have to take off work, so y'all just figure it out, and then I'll go from there.
Yeah.
That'll be the same with me. Whatever day you pick, I will have to take that day off, but, um, yeah. I'm gonna have to take that day off, but I, I need to know in advance, because...
I'm gonna do it on a Friday, which I know y'all don't.
So I can, so I can just ask them for some different dates. Y'all check, check your emails.
Would you all mind sending Shanna the dates that are absolute no? So we don't spend our, you know what I mean, to make it more efficient?
I mean, if the board is agreeable with the 7th and they're available, that is a good day for me.
September 7th?
August the 7th.
Right, September the 7th.
That's too late, that's too late.
We gotta, I mean...
We have to do it sooner than that.
Because that's the first step, like, it pushes everything else.
Okay, so what, what we're hearing is that right now, that is, there is a proposed date of August the 15th from 1:00 to 4:00, but you're going to see if there's another flexible time. You're gonna email the board. But right now, if they're, if they do not have another time, the 15th, can that be attended from 1:00 to 4:00?
I, I, like I said, I'm gonna have to take off, so I'll, I'll take off, whichever day y'all pick.
I have to take off.
I mean, we're talking about six, seven weeks from now, about eight weeks from now. Is that enough time?
When did they give us this date? Because I mean, I know we've been approved to work with them, but I mean, it's like, we've been approved to work with them several, I think, months ago, but now they giving us a date, and it does cause a conflict for a board member. So that's what I'm saying. It, is it, we can't, we have to do it in August?
No, if you have to do it that's fine.
I mean, I would like our board members to be here. I don't, I mean, especially since we've been approved this, and now they're just giving us a date. It seemed like they would've gave us more than one date.
I think one of these might have been so far out that if, that we would just like...
Well, Jeannie says she got a, a previous scheduled appointment, so that's, I'm just saying...
Danny and I both have appointments on that day, but, I mean, I mean, it's...
That ain't gonna work with just three board members.
But if it's, you know, you, you mentioned that the 7th of September's too late. There is a deadline that we need to meet, right?
But why is September 7th too late?
Well, the problem is, it's just putting it later and later on getting started to do it.
Those are the bylaws, that's where you start at.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, like, my only question is, we approved this months ago. So if there was a timeline, looked like it should have been gave us a timeline, not come now and just throw one date on us. There's not a timeline for them. Okay, so that's what I'm saying. If there's not a timeline, will September 7th work?
Well, right now, we don't know no more than we do have a, a date of the 15th of August.
We have policies that we need to get into place to be in compliance. We need to do this sooner than later. I do not feel like it's in the best interest...
I'm saying, what policies are those?
There's all kinds of policies that came, that, I mean, legislation was just passed that we need to get, we need to have...
Right, but you saying this meeting is just bylaws? So it's not like we're gonna be addressing policy at that time, we're just addressing a bylaws?
What about the, what about...
Can't get started on policies.
Well, they ain't gonna be able to get started with two, three board members and not two, especially when we're doing bylaws. So I mean, that should involve all of us.
What suggestions would y'all like? I'm open to suggestions, then. Whatever you all would like, whatever's the pleasure of the board.
Do it, I can call in.
Okay, well, let's just, let's leave it at this, because I've already had two on this side over here, and Brenda say that, you know, if that has to be the 15th, then if there's no other flexibility, then they would attend. I have appointments on that day, but if it can be done earlier in the day, like, 1:00 to 4:00, then I will make arrangements to, to be here. I know Jeannie has got...
I will too, I'll make arrangements.
Possibly some problems, but, you know, we need, we need to get it down.
Can we check and see if there's another day? And if it's not, we can flex it. But my only concern is, again, I understand there's timelines, but every time something comes to the board, it seem rushed. So again, if y'all gonna want stuff to be done by a certain time, y'all gotta do better bringing it to us. You can't bring it to us and then say, it's timelines, it's timelines.
You understand this is like eight weeks out.
I understand it's eight weeks out.
I don't, I don't know how much of that time you need.
Eight weeks out, I, it's not technically eight weeks out, because we, we embarking on July, and if you already got two people that got scheduled appointments. So what I'm saying is, if we can see that, I'm just saying, again, if there was gonna be a time crunch on this, we could've, should've got a little more notice, because again, you got two board members with conflicts. That's all I'm saying.
It's seven weeks out, it's seven weeks out to the day, and so if you all want to send Shanna...
I can move my appointment, it's for 1:30 that day, and I can move my appointment to earlier in the day and still accomplish what I need to. Like Danny said, you know, if he can move his to earlier in the day, then he will still...
If you're just, if you're just on Shanna, dates are absolutely no, then we'll get back with that company, it's not a problem.
And my answer is, I can be here on the 15th.
We really are just trying to start somewhere, we thought seven weeks, you know, was...
I could be here on the 15th, I'm just saying, I want all board members to be here.
I do too, but we have to start somewhere.
Okay, so, so it's pretty well come down, I think, if I'm hearing that everybody, you know, if it's the 15th, 15th. All right? Okay, this moves us on to our action items. The consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. This brings us up to 9.04, which is an appointment of FSBA Advocacy Committee Representative and Advocacy Committee Alternate.
I'll make a motion, if Bonnie wants to continue doing that, since she's been in that role, to let her continue being the advocacy.
I second that.
If, if, is that okay, Bonnie?
Okay, motion's been made for that. Any discussion? And seconded, all in favor for Bonnie Sue to serve as our committee representative?
Motion.
Or as our representative, right?
Yeah.
And then, how about the alternative?
You wanna do it all in the same motion?
Alternative, aye, ma'am.
I can't remember who was the alternate, was it Deidre? Who was alternate?
It went Eugene?
I was alternate.
I meant to look that up before y'all asked.
I think, I, I think it was Jeannie.
It does matter, it does matter.
It does matter, Bonnie Sue.
I couldn't go to you, I would've asked y'all to go.
I was the alternate year before last.
Right, I didn't think she was...
I thought we went with Jeannie again, but I, I'm not...
She's looking right quick, like...
I meant to look that up, and I forgot.
But Bonnie Sue hasn't needed to use an alternate this year, so I haven't. If I am, yet I haven't...
Yeah, I have been fortunate, I've been able to do.
Almost got it.
And all those webinars.
There's a lot of them, it's every Friday for, for a year.
But there are a lot, they are a lot of, I mean, they're very informative.
Well, yes, but it's a process, it's a whole year process of coming up with ideas and reaching out to representatives and...
Yeah.
Making connections is the main kind of thing. This is gonna be election years, will be interesting. How it's gonna work.
It was...
Ask you a question after this or before you leave about the tutoring thing? That Rick Scott sent us, did you get that email? Need to look at that, because there's a tutoring company out there. You need to read it, I think you got copied on it. Rick Scott? I'll, I'll forward it to you.
Okay, it was Jeannie.
That's what I thought.
Bonnie Sue and Jeannie, right.
So, do you want to stay as the...
I can, yeah.
Okay, then I'll, that will be my motion.
Okay, for Bonnie Sue to be the representative and the alternate would be Ms. Mathis and...
And she seconded the motion.
Of course she seconded. Okay, is any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Brings us down to item 1100, 11.00. This is concerning trim dates for our 23-24 budget. September the 7th is the final public hearing, is on a Thursday, so, um, this is an action item.
Motion? Motion to go with the dates is, as on here, and I believe it is July 20, it starts in July...
July the, yeah.
July the 18th.
July the 25th.
And July the 25th, and then our final budget hearing to move from September 5th to September the 7th to meet the guidelines of the advertisement days in between.
July 18th, July 25th, and then...
Then September the 7th for the final budget hearing.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we go with those three dates.
Okay.
I second it.
All right, Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. All righty, and this brings us down to 12.05, reappointment of Ms. Rudd as Director of Instruction, position number 901163100, 8 hour, 12 month, effective July 1st to 23 through June the 30th to 24. And she was just inadvertently left off the reappointment list. That was approved just a week ago or so, 6th on the 15th of this month.
Motion?
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. Brings us down to items of interest by the superintendent and board. And Ms., you don't, you didn't throw jurors out. Okay, all righty. Ms. Ball, do you have anything?
I neglected to ask last time about the redistricting. I reached out to Mr. Bishop for the county. I think you all have previously received correspondence about that, but I didn't know if the, the board wanted to hear from any of the individuals that are making the rounds, talking about redistricting. I've been asked a couple individual questions, but I just was trying to get a consensus so I can let Mr. Bishop know and try and coordinate. I mean, he doesn't have to know, but I was trying to coordinate when, when the people came to talk to the county that they could also potentially talk with us.
I'm interested.
When is that gonna be?
Whenever we schedule it. This is in the redistricting cycle based upon the census.
I remember the last time this came up, it wasn't pleasant. It wasn't?
I don't have a comment one way or the other.
If it's unpleasant, I don't want to be there. I don't want it pleasant.
Just wanted a definitive answer, I've been getting questioned about it, so I just wanted a consensus among y'all.
Do we know when it is? No.
We can, we can schedule it whenever. I sent you all correspondence that was sent to me previously, so I've just kind of let it sit, because I couldn't ask you each individually and thought this would be a better method, but...
Okay.
If y'all want to think about it and just let me know individually, that's fine. I just wanted to let you know that I didn't ignore it, and I haven't forgotten it, so...
Brenda, last time, how much time did it take to discuss it?
All right, is that all you have?
That's it, thank you.
All right, Ms. Dunell?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, I just want to reiterate concern far as workshops and agenda reviews, because for a couple of months now, stuff has been coming to us, and I understand we get our agendas a week in advance, but I'm still feeling like we're not getting more notice when it comes to just a lot of different changes in regards to job descriptions, you know, a lot of stuff, and it, it hasn't started now. This is something that has been going on, but it seems like the, um, the more, you know, adjustable the board is, it still seem like stuff has not been taken in consideration in regards to how stuff is being brought to us. So we would be able to ask all those questions that we need to ask one-on-one or even be able to address these issues as a board. I do understand, you know, when it comes to certain things, you know, we're not gonna be able to have, you know, input on it. It will only be the discussion can occur at the board's meeting. But then some other things, I, I just, I'm still thinking we may need to be looking back at the idea of us workshopping. I know we've done it before, and I'm not saying that we have to do this every meeting, but on things that will require more of our attention, I just think we need to really take in consideration the idea of doing a workshop or then a agenda review, so that would allow us to have the time we need to address some different things, as well as looking scheduling. I know we do a school district-wide calendar, and again, I don't know if it's something we could just go ahead and be looking at for this next coming year as to how we can, because I, I just know it's summertime, and a lot always come in the summer with contracts and different things, and when there's the questioning, there's always, well, we gotta get these contracts out, we gotta get these contracts out. And I get that, but I know a lot of times when I'm asking questions or other board members are asking questions about stuff, there's always the concern that we don't have time, we gotta move forward. And so I'm just asking that, again, I don't know about the other board members, but again, I, I don't want drive-bys, and I don't want to, you know, flood this meeting with a bunch of questions that I could have been addressed. So I'm asking, like I said, I can't speak for nobody else, but for me, I don't want drive-bys, but I don't want it to be confusing if I express concern and it appears like I'm disagreeing with something. I'm gonna ask questions, so I just want stuff, stuff to be a little more timely. So I'm just asking, can we relook at workshops or agenda reviews? So that would give the board the time to, you know, being involved as we can, because we're the ones that's having to vote on this stuff, and if it's all gonna be piled on up as one time, we can only review so much at one time. That's my concern.
Ms. Dunell, I will, after this preliminary, you know, the thing, whenever we go to review policies, whenever we have, like, the, I, I don't know how to call it, like a chapter or whatever, whenever we have part done, I will, before we bring them to those, I will be glad to schedule workshops for those times so that y'all can do that. That's perfectly reasonable request, and we can make that happen.
Yeah, I'm not, and I'm not just saying with that, I'm just saying, like, with stuff that y'all gonna know, like, the last board meeting, it was a lot at us at one time. But I'm just saying, like, if it could just, you know, if we could just be giving a little more notice on what we're getting presented with, I think that would die down on questions here. I think that would die down on questions here. But again, I, I, I just can't vote on some, I don't feel like I've got a good explanation on.
I, I'm kind of, this is what I would like to see, and then, and it's just, just me, I'm, I'm not speaking for anybody else. I would like to see the old policy, the statute that caused that policy to change.
That is what we have, yes ma'am.
And then the change of that, that made, you took, that took place.
Yes.
So I can follow the history and the reason why. Um, and I would, I would appreciate not having to drink through a water, a fire hydrant, I mean, just.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that, that would be, and I know, and I know you feel the same thing, you're got, it, we, anytime there's all these changes in the legislature and it's all these rules and all these things coming at us, we all feel that. And I know it's got to be extra hard for you. And I'm, and I, and I appreciate you, the changes you're wanting to take place, I appreciate you, you're being proactive. I appreciate all of that, and it's not an easy task, I understand. But like Deidre saying, we just, we need to know as a board, I, I feel like I need to know as a board, why? It, what, what it was, why is it changing and where is it going to? It's kinda like a, just a strategic plan.
No problem, okay.
Are you, uh, are you done?
I'm good.
Okay, uh, Ms. Agner?
Well, that's basically all I had, um, look, looking forward to, I, I noticed, I wondered the other day, I was gonna ask this question, maybe Jeannie can tell us, the summer school, how, I know it's probably in full swing. How did it affect down at Steen Hatchy with the rise of the river? Did it?
Oh, we're fine.
Okay.
Fine.
I wondered about that. I meant to call somebody and ask, but.
We're good.
That's, that's basically all.
Thank you, Bonnie Sue.
Ms. Mathis?
I, I think that a lot of, like, the, the details with changing bylaws, because, I mean, that is, like Angela said, that's our governing body. And when, when it all comes down to what we're doing, it is based on a bylaw that, that, you know, that go, so. But a lot of it versus having a workshop, I think that we could, you know, get an emailed document, just what, you know, think, some of it can be exchanged through email to get a good review instead of the, like Bonnie Sue said, the fire hydrant version. So that we can digest some of the things ahead of a meeting or a workshop.
I don't think we can do that. Can we, Angela, can, we have to all be together to be able to do that. We can't do it in the.
You could, you could have the document in advance to review it and be prepared for the meeting, but the discussion and approval has to be done in. And I could be wrong, but I think that's the purpose of this workshop, is to kind of go through how this all works, not like this is what you're getting, this is what we're approving. I think they're explaining not just the bylaws, but like how.
Process.
This whole process will go.
And I understood that it just, I got a little, I, I, I just got a little inquisitive when it's, you guys said it was gonna go to a point where it wouldn't include us, and I mean, I get that, but what I'm saying is, when it gets to that point, still before you bring it to us, I just feel like we should have something before you put it on this agenda. I get that, but I'm, I'm still saying, you have thirty days to review it, but what I'm saying is, when we advertise it to the public, you're advertising it, but the board hasn't had an input, and it's like that will interfere with the thirty days.
What she's saying is before it ever shows up on the agenda.
Yeah.
Before it ever shows up on the agenda.
Well, I don't even know how they're gonna do it, to be honest with you, like, I have no idea.
I mean, when it's ready for advertisement, we don't typically make changes, right? Angela, that's, that's the public making changes, not us, right?
Typically, you advertise, you take public comment, and you have to change. Because of public comment, because of board comment, so, yes, it's, that's the whole procedure. And, you know, just the fact that you're advertising it doesn't mean you're bound to it. You may hear something from the public that gets a different thought approach, so that's the purpose of having the public hearings.
Okay.
Hold on and get ready for some workshops.
Okay.
And that's fine. I mean, seriously, like, I, like, really mean it because I have legitimately have, I hear your concerns. Y'all right on target. I love that. I would rather y'all, I mean, we need to be questioned, we need to know why. We all need to be on the same page. That's what we've been lacking, so that, I'm good with that. I think that's one hundred percent reasonable, and I think that's, your, your job as the board, you know what I mean? Is that's part of our, our duties. I think this is great, it's gonna be good.
Couple of the board members may recall when we did this before, I remember a meeting we had over at the middle school, Mr. Brandon was the one who was going through, as you suggested, and tracking and so on. And it was, it was long. I, I don't remember how many meetings we had. There were numerous meetings going through those policies at that point in time, so.
And I'm sure there's a lot that's gone, needs to be changed.
Okay, I, thank you, Ms. Mathis.
No, I think that, I think that's it for me, just. Okay.
Ms. Carlton?
Really, I don't have to reiterate anything, but I just wanted to ask, uh, we actually go back to school on August the tenth, it is the tenth. That's what the students.
What day are teachers coming back?
I guess the third.
Third.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, and, you know, summer's almost gone, you know, so we're gearing up. I'm, I know, still see a lot of people working, and it's, it's just that time of the year.
Any more schools just open twenty-four seven, it seems like.
Just about is.
It just seems like it's just going every day and, for all year, you know?
Did we have any impacts from the rain? I mean, as far as with the schools, do we have any issues that you know of?
Yeah, well, we had a little bit of flooding here in the finance office. The water got so high, but, um, that's all that I, that's all that Dan, you know, that I heard about, we had just in that one finance office, and all had to be, it was bad. It smelled very nice for a couple of minutes. Good now, it's all been taken care of.
Well, good, okay, that's all.
Okay, uh, before we adjourn, I, tonight, we, you know, had to make some moves and, and approve the, for the trim notices. And of course, it was sub, underneath the topic of, of calendars, and it, it reminded me of something. Um, I know that we've approved the school calendar for this year. Um, and I'll have, I'll be the first one, it just flew over my head whenever we looked at the, or when we approved the calendar of the change of holidays, most especially at Christmas time, you know? And, you know, school, uh, school gets, I think, the twenty-third, uh, if I'm, if I remember correctly, uh, twenty-second or twenty-third of, of December, just a day or two before Christmas. And normally, we've been getting out for as long as I can remember, a week before Christmas. Now, the reason I say this is that, um, you know, some parents, um, you know, just take, it's always been this way, and they make, already make preparations. I know I've had, I've had one phone call in particular. Uh, and sometime they plan months and months ahead, especially if you're gonna be flying, getting plane tickets and so forth. I know that, I'm sure that we can work with these families, I mean, but you're talking about maybe the child needing to be out of school, uh, three or four days prior to, than what now the date is for this year because they weren't aware that we were, you know, and I, I've already went through, I, I know the logic behind what, you know, the calendar looks like. Uh, so I just wanna make mention of that, that I hope, that, uh, I don't think it's gonna be that many, but I do know that there's one, two families out there, possibly, uh, that we may have to work with them and their child because they already set plane tickets, everything to, to, for the Christmas holidays. And we may have to work with those families, and I hope that we will, uh, be willing to work. And, you know, that, that reminds me also is, I did, that that's, to me, would be a major change for everybody so used to you getting out a week before Christmas, you know? That anytime we have a, you know, something like that, that we, and I, I'll have to take part blame on that because that, it just flew over my head, uh, but we need to probably get some.
She's looking like she don't understand. It's the week before Christmas and the week after Christmas?
There's many years that we've gone all the way.
Last year.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't understand what the.
He's saying that most people are used to us getting out of school before like the twenty-third, um, just a few days before Christmas.
No, that's not true. I can pull the school calendars, and I swear, that's absolutely, I don't feel that's accurate. I've been in this district for over twenty years as a teacher and an administrator, and there's lots of years that we've gone up to that Friday before. It's whether it's eighteen.
That's what he's saying. He's used, he's saying that most people are used to it being at least like following in that week before, not the week of Christmas.
But I'm saying that's not correct.
Yeah.
That's not correct.
But quick, but quick question, I don't mean to cut you off, Danny, but.
I, I couldn't, I mean, I, I didn't go back and look at the previous calendar years. Uh, there again, I guess that's the old fogey in me. I always thought, you know, we got out prior to Christmas, and undoubtedly, these families did too. Um, and then they seen the, you know, the, the last day of school, which is just, what, twenty-second, twenty-third of December? Um, I don't remember it being, of course, like I say, got it in black and white. Uh, but anyway, what I'm just, point I wanna make is that, that there's been some mo- move already that, you know, you just pretty well set in stone. Not a bunch, but there may be a couple of families out there who's gonna need, you know, for, to, to work with the school and for the school to work with them for, you know, because of pre-arrangements of kids being out, you know, a few days prior to the cutoff date or to the end of date before Christmas, is this what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Um.
But most students can, the parents can write a note, and those days can be excused, right? If, if I'm not.
They have to have a legitimate excuse, and that's lay out, and that's outlined in the, in the statute, what legitimate excuses are, which would be like religious holidays, illness, um, and it's very, I mean, it's, I mean, cause.
I always, I thought, I always read in the policy if kids had to be out and the parents, um, wrote a note that those days would get excused and the work would be excused.
The statute asks for legitimate excuse for insurmountable reasons. I mean, cause we can't promote attendance and then say a parent can write a note for, they're going on vacation. I'm just, I mean, I'm being honest with what, we can't say that this is our priority and attendance is important, and then they've got a cruise planned for the fifteenth and, and that's just not, we can't, we have to, we have to do what we say we're gonna do.
Well.
But I understand, Mr. Lund, yes, sir, and I'm sure that those schools will work with those.
Yeah, and.
Yes, sir, I mean, that's what we wanna do. We don't wanna turn parents, we don't wanna, we wanna do the right thing for the kids and the parents. We, we just cannot, um, say on a grand scale, you know, that a parent, like, they can do anything. We just have to use some common sense, yes, sir, and we, and we want to work with our families. I mean, they're our number one asset when it comes to working with our children or our team, so, so, yes, sir, I, I understand.
And, you know, and, and maybe this discussion just simply, um, is that we need to pay more attention, most especially, you know, if, when you're arranging the, the dates, I understand the logic behind it. I had explained to me, trying to make the, the nine weeks more compatible, the same number of teaching days and so forth. I understand that, I get that. Um, but, you know, if, if we see we got some, um, uh, you know, most especially around the holidays, if we gonna make any kind of changes, um, we might need to make note of that to where that maybe the paper can do something about notifying, you know, if there's a major change or something other for, you know, I, I'm the last minute cop guy, but some folks are not last minute. They, they plan a long time ahead.
They have to get their places sometimes the year before. When they leave there, they have to go ahead and look at for next.
It'll, it'll work out. It, it will work out. Okay. Other than that, um, we just, everybody, we're air lax, it's been said, everybody's working. Um, this month is gone. Here we are already talking about this date, this date in July, and this date in August, and that date. School starts back, you know, kids on the, you said the tenth.
Yes, sir.
And so, everything's shaking and rattling and rolling, but that's a good thing. That's a good thing, as long as everybody's working together, so. Other than that, um, do I have a motion to second that we adjourn?
Motion.
All right, Ms. Donnell makes that motion. Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Did you get that email?